The House will come to order. The clerk will report House File Number 5.
House File Number 5, an actuary laying in the financing operations state and local government. Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 5 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this is the motion to suspend the rules to take up the tax bill this evening, and I would ask for a yes vote.
Representative Fabian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Republican members, I would encourage a yes vote on the motion to suspend. Thank you.
Representative Dzuskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The new House Republican Caucus encourages a yes vote.
All those in favor of the Winkler motion, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 5.
Second reading. There are amendments at the desk. With the body's permission, will the author explain the bill, and then we'll take up the amendments. Representative Markort, to the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and members. And I, first of all, would like to thank the minority parties for suspending the rules so we can take this up. Thank you so very much. Members, we have a tax bill here that will benefit every citizen of this great state. It provides significant tax cuts for our working families and our senior citizens and our farmers and our small businesses. And it is a bill that is going to improve the quality of life for everyone, everywhere. And that's what this bill is going to do. But before I go any further to describe the bill, I'd like to give some thank yous. And I'd first of all like to thank Governor Walz for his leadership, Commissioner Bowley, who was very instrumental in being a great resource and a partner in developing this tax bill, and also Speaker Hortman and Senate Majority Leader Gazelka for their leadership in helping to make this tax bill possible. I also want to thank all those people who always make us members on these committees and us chairs look good. And in the House Research Staff, we have Pat Dalton, Alex Hagler, Chris Clayman, Jared Swanson, Catherine Schill, Cynthia Templin, and a guest appearance every once in a while, Joel Michael, who helped, and also Sean Williams. So that is the House Research Staff that makes us always look as good as possible. Also, the committee legislative administrator, Ursula O'Driscoll, and our partisan research on the DFL side, Sean Hadorn and Stephen Rubus, and the Tax Committee Administrator Nathan Jesson. And thank you all for your great work and staff for making things happen. I want to thank the members of the Tax Committee and the members of the Property Tax Committee for your great work during the session, and also thank the tax conferees. Representative Davids, thank you so much for your work. Representative Woffler, Chair of the Property Tax Division, thank you. Representative Gomez and Representative Vice Chair Leslegard, thank you so much for your work. Also want to thank the Senate and Chair Chamberlain and the Senate conferees in the Senate for the cordial working relationship we had in putting this bill together. Speaking of the conference committee, in the conference committee, before the end of session, we met 10 times. We had 10 meetings. We adopted 75 provisions that later on went into this tax bill that you see right here, House File Number 5. We also discussed, probably in the conference committee, another 25 items publicly as we went through. Then, two days ago, when this bill was being formed, we did have an informational hearing of the Tax and Property Tax Committees. And I do want to mention to members, there are four changes. There are four changes from the meeting that we had, informational meeting on Wednesday, to today. And I'm just going to go over them very quickly in case you want to find them in the bill. But on spreadsheet line, page 4, line 149, Article 2, Section 5 of the bill, angel credit, there was $10 million added in the first biennium. And that was paid for just by dropping to the bottom line. So if you look now on the spreadsheet, we actually have a $9.9 million actually cut net in the bill. Another thing that got changed were just some clarification on the Federal Reserve data, and that's Article 11, Section 1 of the bill, pages 212 and 213. We also, there was a difference between what was on the spreadsheet and what was in the language of the bill on the taxpayer assistant grants, and that was Article 11, Section 18, page 225 of the bill, and page 8, line 80 of the spreadsheet. And finally, there was a provision on captive insurance companies. Tax Committee members, you remember this. It was actually in both bills, and we just missed it. And so leadership and that was fine with that. And so that's now in the bill, and that's on page 4, line 161 of the spreadsheet, and Article 2, Sections 10, 11, 15, and 20 of the bill. So those are four changes that were made from the meeting we had the other day. So members, let me talk about what's in the bill. And it really is a bill that creates really tax reform. And the first provision is the standard deduction. We matched the federal standard deduction at $24,400, which means now not only will provide some significant tax cuts, but also 92% now of all filers will go through the standard deduction. It really simplifies things. When you pair that with an income tax rate cut from 7.05 to 6.80 on the second tier, members, that is the first income tax rate cut since 2000, the first rate cut in 19 years. And when you combine the standard deduction with that rate cut, on the average median family income, it's a 7% income tax cut, very significant. A third portion of the bill is the working family credit expansion, $61 million, and primarily expanding, conforming what the federal government does for three children or more with families. That's where the major expansion is there. Another provision, $48 million, has to do with taking a transfer that had gone from TANF to working family credit, transferring those dollars out of the working family credit back to the Department of Human Services, and those dollars will help go to the Minnesota Family Investment Program, increasing by $100 a month. Those payments for the first increase in 33 years in M-Fib. There's plenty of property tax relief in the bill. Local government aid and county program aid, $26 million in the first year, and then goes to $30 million for each of those programs into the next year. Local government aid, the lifeblood of these local communities, that will bring, for local government aid, will bring that dollar amount back to the 2002 levels before those cuts. Another property tax area, and very important to farmers, is an increase in the agricultural school building bond credit. So right now, it's currently at 40%. It steps up over four years to get to 70% credit. So in payable 2020, next year, that 40% will move to 50%, and then to 55% the next year, then 60% the next year, and then gets to 70% in property taxes payable 2023. This is significant property tax relief for farmers, but also increases equity for rural students in trying to pass school building bonds, which are really, really important. Also, there is $10 million of school equalization on the operating referendums, which will provide some property tax relief in schools. There is $10 million in cuts to the Social Security taxes of about $10 million. There is a $50 million property tax cut on the commercial industrial statewide property tax. That $50 million, $47.5 million, goes to businesses and industries, and $2.5 million goes to seasonal recreational property. That's the division there. Also in the bill are many provisions on your local option sales taxes and tax increment financing districts. Those are in the bill. There's also a $20 million increase for the Minneapolis Employee Retirement Fund, bringing it back to the $16 million level that was in there in the past. And finally, two other major provisions in the bill. One, it repeals the sunset of the provider tax and replaces that 2.0% with a 1.8% tax, a 10% decrease in the tax rate from what is current to what would be the new continuing rate. And finally, the kind of last major portion, it establishes a regional exchange district in the city of Duluth, where you have two hospitals there in a district, and this would help pay for total appropriation bonds of up to $97 million. The max payment would be $8.1 million a year to pay for infrastructure that would lead to those hospitals and also parking ramps and so forth. So, members, those are the major provisions in the bill. But again, in short, this is a bill that prioritizes our working families and our senior citizens, our farmers and our small businesses, and it really moves the dial. And it gets to people all over Minnesota. Everyone in Minnesota will benefit from this tax cut bill. So I will stand for questions or amendments. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Swazinski moves to amend House File Number 5. The amendment is coded A6.
The member from Lyon, Representative Swazinski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd appreciate a roll call on this.
Representative Swazinski requests a roll call. Are there 15 hands? Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Swazinski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And the A6 amendment is pretty straightforward. I think we all believe that we want our businesses to be able to invest here in the state of Minnesota so that they can grow their roots, grow jobs, grow economy, and grow our communities. And, you know, I know the House Republicans and the House Democrats and the Senate Republicans and the Senate Democrats all talked about the 179, the need to really bring that forward, to bring it as close as we can to federal conformity. And my guess is it could have been just potentially an oversight, but, you know, this amendment essentially looks into the tails going out into the future, not within this biennium, and brings us into the conformity to allow for the full expensing of costs within business, and then also eliminates some of that, the five years in which you have, so everything can be upfront. So it moves it up, speeds it up, gets it where it really needs to be when it comes to conformity, and appreciate a green vote. So thank you very much.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I would ask for a no vote. This amendment is outside the scope of our budget agreement with the Senate and the Governor, and we need to get this budget done tonight.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will take the roll. The clerk will close the roll. There being 54 ayes and 73 nays, the motion does not prevail. The amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Torkelson moves to amend House File Number 5. The amendment is coded A4.
Representative Torkelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll try to be brief. This amendment relates to property tax relief for required buffers. You may remember that both candidates for governor in the last election talked about relief for farmers that have required buffers on their property taxes. I worked hard this year to put together a proposition that would do that. Just a real brief explanation of how it would work. As long as the county would reduce property taxes due on those required buffers to zero, the county would then determine how much property tax they would have collected had they collected property tax on those buffers, then the state would reimburse the counties for that amount of money. I worked hard with the assessors and the counties to come up with the language that I believed was appropriate. It was actually a cheaper proposition than the one that the Governor had in his budget proposal, but it didn't make it to the final bill. I think it's a great idea. I think it helps people make their promises come true, including the Governor, and I urge a green vote on this buffer property tax relief proposition.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, I would ask for a red vote. The amendment is outside of the scope of the budget agreement reached with the Governor and the Senate.
Representative Torkelson.
Madam Speaker, request a roll call.
Representative Torkelson requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Davids.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. And to my good friend, Representative Majority Leader Winkler, we don't have an agreement. We didn't sign the agreement. We don't have an agreement. So I don't know if it's proper to be saying outside of an agreement, "We don't have an agreement." So I wouldn't use that. Just vote it down. But vote yes on this one.
The clerk will take the roll on the amendment. Clerk will close the roll. There being 54 ayes and 74 nays, the motion does not prevail. The amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
O'Driscoll moves to amend House File Number 5. The amendment is coded A1.
Representative O'Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. An oversight was discovered as we got into the budgeting process, that a provision that was going to expire on the PERA, the Public Employees Retirement Association, where the state of Minnesota has been making transfer payments to help with some increases that had occurred about two decades ago in contributions that the local communities are required to make. And without dealing with that, each and every one of the communities of the 1469 or 68 cities and local jurisdictions that are affected by this will see, at the local level, a property tax increase if the state does not extend this program. The way that the state does its budgeting is a lot differently in the cycle than the local communities do. If you are a city, you will be starting to look at your 2020 budget already beginning in August, September of this year, because their fiscals run January 1st through December 31st, unlike the state that runs from July 1st through June 30th. If we don't address this issue tonight, each and every one of us is going to have our communities calling us up as members of the legislature, saying, "What happened to that money? Why are we having to pay for this additional provision?" There's tens of thousands of dollars that will affect cities like Hopkins, Minnesota, St. Louis Park, Brooklyn Park, Mankato, just to mention a few, and the other 1,465 that I have not mentioned. But folks, there's a way that we can fix this tonight. There's another provision in the tax bill for MRF that has been negotiated and renegotiated and negotiated again. And it's being negotiated this time because one of the parties doesn't like the way that it was negotiated the last time. That benefits one community, the city of Minneapolis, where 1,600, or I should say 1,467 other communities will go without if that provision stays in the tax bill. You have a choice tonight, members. You can take a provision that's in the tax bill where it's not broken, or one side doesn't really like the outcome, and ask to have it renegotiated. Or you can help every local unit of government who's going to get a tax increase because of the money that's going to the city of Minneapolis on a renegotiated deal. Local property taxes will go up. I feel so strongly about this, members, that I want a roll call on this, Madam Speaker.
Representative O'Driscoll requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative O'Driscoll.
And yesterday in the Pension Commission, we had uncoupled any finance-related information from the bill, which will be seeing a policy bill standing on its own merits for pensions tonight. And the only provision that the Pension Commission took a position on unanimously, was the PERA provision, saying that this needs to be resolved as soon as possible. And the Pension Commission is looked to for these types of recommendations. Madam Speaker and members, I encourage you to vote for the A1 amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker and members, I would recommend following the excellent advice of Representative Davids and vote it down.
Any other discussion? The clerk will take the roll on the amendment. The clerk will close the roll. There being 53 ayes and 75 nays, the motion does not prevail. The amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Davids moves to amend House File Number 5. The amendment is coded A3.
The member from Fillmore, Representative Davids.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This amendment increases subtraction maximums by $690 for married couples, filing joint returns in $570 for single heads of households. We use the MRF money to pay for this, to have fewer people paying higher amounts in Social Security. I'd ask for a roll call, Madam Speaker, and I'd appreciate your support.
Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Pearson. Representative Winkler.
Members, please vote no.
The clerk will take the roll on the amendment. The clerk will close the roll. There being 54 ayes and 73 nays, the motion does not prevail. The amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Hertas moves to amend House File Number 5. The amendment is coded A5.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Hertas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I would also like to request a roll call.
Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Seeing 15 jazz hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Hertas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And members, Representative Markort gave a very good introduction about the tax bill, and he mentioned to all of you that LGA is the lifeblood of the cities. And what this amendment does is it takes the MRF money, the $10 million, and it makes sure that 95 cities, which Representative Markort didn't mention, that don't get any LGA, would be brought into the formula as previously proposed. Members, Minneapolis has about 400,000 people, more or less. There's 1.3 million people, 20% of the state's population, that is contributing to the local government aid program, but receives no benefit. And so that, in brief, is what the bill does. Representative Winkler, this would actually save money, because what I'm proposing costs about $8 million, and we would save $10 million off of the elimination of the MRF transfer. So, members, I'd appreciate your support. We can fix this LGA formula once and for all. Many of you members have suburban districts that would benefit from this, that are not receiving LGA, as well as rural parts of Minnesota. Mary Murphy, I think she's not on the floor, but even Hermantown would benefit from this. So thank you, members. I urge you to give me a green vote.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I would ask for a no vote.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll. Members, please vote. The clerk will close the roll. There being 54 ayes and 73 nays, the motion does not prevail. The amendment is not adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 5.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. Representative Davids.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This tax bill was a bill that, when it left the House floor, I certainly was not able to vote for it at that time. I was hoping that when it came back from conference that I'd be able to, and here now in special session. There are many good provisions of the bill, and Chair Markort went through them. But first of all, I'd like to also thank our tremendous House Research Team and House Fiscal. I've named them in past years the A-Team, and they definitely are the A-Team. I'd like to thank the conferees. I'd like to thank Mr. Jesson. You were very good, very good to work with, and I appreciate that. And I especially like to thank Dr. Rubus, the doctor of Taxology, who does a tremendous job for this entire House. Very, and most of all right now, I'd like to thank Chair Markort for running a good, very good committee, inclusive. Everyone was heard during the committee process, and Chair Markort, I really appreciate that. I really do. And like I said, I'd like to, certainly like to be able to vote for this bill. And at no fault of Chair Markort's, this little provision called the sick tax snuck in on us. We have over a billion dollars of tax increases in this bill, and they're not coming from Chair Markort. Let's not think of that for a second, but they're there. And so I would certainly thank Chair Markort for his work, but I would also recommend a no vote.
Representative Munson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This bill definitely improved, as Representative David said, since it left the House floor. But I'm disappointed that the provider tax came in at 1.8%. This is, again, with no end in sight. This is a tax on Minnesota sick, and that's not what my priorities are up here in lowering the cost of health care. A lot of people emailed me and called me, saying that we need to keep the provider tax because it's so essential to Minnesota care. In fact, some of the House members did videos showing, you know, that we needed this for Minnesota care. We've been digging into the numbers, and of all the money that comes in from this provider tax into the Health Care Access Fund, really, no money goes to Minnesota care. It used to go there, but since 2015, the federal basic health plan subsidies and the enrollee premiums pay for Minnesota care. This is an unnecessary tax on Minnesotans. But where it is necessary and where people in this body like it is because the Health Care Access Fund, and this is mostly the people watching at home, because I think most of you guys already know this, it sits outside of the general fund, and it's not part of our general accounting. And this fund has been pillaged for special projects. In fact, in 2015, the majority in this House moved a half a billion dollars, almost a half a billion, $455 million was shifted from the general fund into the Health Care Access Fund that shows up as an expenditure. And then it was moved back into the general fund in July 1st, when the new budget started, to show as an expenditure. to show as an extra almost half billion dollars in revenue. This is, this is a laundromat for legislators to move money back and forth for special projects, to try to make budgets look bigger or smaller. And we really should be moving the Health Care Access Fund into the General Fund for accounting purposes so we can be more honest and transparent with taxpayers. And this is, this is, this is a bad use of accounting, and this is, I hope this tax can be repealed in future years because without an end in sight and not being used for Minnesota care, it's just another slush fund. So, some things I do like about the bill. I love the farmed egg tax credit. It's really going to help rural Minnesota, and especially help our schools in rural Minnesota when we want to have a bonding referendum for the schools, and it's, it doesn't put a disproportionate amount of money on farmers. And obviously, I like that the taxes are lower here than when we left the floor. But, members, I'm going to be voting no today, but I'm glad that there was some improvements made to the bill. And thank you, Chair Marquardt.
Discussion to the bill. Representative Druzhkowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Representative Chair Marquardt, for all of your work on the bill. As Representative Munson pointed out, the additional work that you did and the really expansion of the work that the two of us have done over the past four years on the egg-to-school tax credit is appreciated. However, again, members, we have, we are swimming in the people's money here in the state of Minnesota. And the effort to bring in more and more taxes when we don't need more tax money is the reason I'm going to be voting against this bill. As a matter of fact, it was pointed out earlier that this is going, this tax bill and the taxes that fund it are going to be all the solutions and the greatest thing to help everybody in the state of Minnesota. And, members, that's not true. If you are, if you get pneumonia and you check into a hospital, you get to pay the sick tax. 1.8% going forward. An immoral tax that comes forward and taxes people when they are in their most difficult time in their life. Congestive heart failure, the number-two reason to be checked into a hospital. You pay the sick tax. Chest pain. Guess what? You pay the sick tax while you're trying to figure out what's going on inside your chest. Heartening of the arteries. You found out you got heartening of the arteries, and guess what? You get to pay a tax. You get a crown on your tooth. Or you get, or you get a filling, or you get something else done with your dental work while you're getting drilled on in the dentist. You're getting drilled again by the government. You've got chronic obstructive lung disease, and the doctor just told you. And then he delivers you the sick tax bill, thanks to Minnesota Democrats. You have had a stroke, and you're in the hospital, and I lost my list, members. I'm back, I'm back, it's okay. You've got a stroke, and guess what? You don't know if you're going to get your limbs back, but guess what? The government's going to get the sick tax out of you. You found out you've got an irregular heartbeat, and you're at the hospital, and you don't know what that means. You're trying to figure out if you're going to live to be 70 or if you're going to live to be 50, or... But guess what? The sick tax is certain. You're going to pay it right now. You've got complications of procedures, devices, implants, and grafts. You pay the sick tax. Mood disorders. You've got depression, and you're trying to figure out how you're going to get your mental health figured out. And they slap you with a sick tax to give you another reason for more treatment. You have fluid and electrolyte disorders, and you're getting a sick tax. Urinary infections. You have a urinary infection, and you're getting treated for it, and then they're going to slap a sick tax on top of that, that you got to pay to Minnesota state government to fund all the expansive programs that are included in this budget. You've got asthma, you pay the sick tax. Diabetics getting checked out of the hospital, pay the sick tax. Skin infections, you pay the sick tax. Gallbladder disease, you pay the sick tax. And if you can't stop reading the list, you get to pay the sick tax. But, members, government programs and the taxes that pay for them are not the cure for what ails our economy or our people. It's the people that take care of that themselves. But instead, we've got a government appetite and people pursuing a socialist agenda here in St. Paul that want to grow our government so much that we got to bring this immoral sick tax on the people of Minnesota. The other things in the bill, Representative Marquardt, you do the Section 179 deduction. I appreciate the approach that you took generally to tax conformity. We still sock it to the businesses really hard. But really, overall, I think a much improved tax conformity approach compared to when it left the House floor. But, members, I can't vote for this bill. I'd encourage a no vote. We're continuing to extract money from hard-working and sick Minnesotans who are getting sicker from the taxes that we're putting on them in order to fund this big oppressive government. I encourage a no vote on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Stearns, Representative O'Neill. The member from Wright, when people stand in front of the county names, it makes it much more difficult. Representative O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to make sure you did actually call for me. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you, members. Yesterday, I spent the entire day at Children's Hospital. And my third grandchild has been there for the last four and a half months. And it's a very expensive bill she has. If you follow me on Facebook, you see all of my posts, and it was quite a long day. Very traumatic, very, very trying on our family. And as much as I'd like to vote for this bill because, you know, I'm on the tax committee, and it was really good work. It was my first time on the tax committee, but it was really good work, and it was good to work with great minds. I absolutely can't vote for this bill today. But it's a very expensive bill for those that, you know, I met a lot of families when I was there. I've been in and out for four and a half months on the heart unit, pediatric heart unit. So, it's a very tough place to go. And the last thing those folks need is an increase in what they're paying. Their bills are not just tens of thousands, but hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so I'd like to vote for that, but I absolutely cannot do that. I'm wondering if Chair Marquardt would yield for one quick question.
He will yield. Representative O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Chair Marquardt. I appreciate the fact that you detailed out what the committee work had done, what the conference committee work had done, what you had done with your colleague in the Senate and working out the details of this particular bill. What I'm not completely clear on is what happened in the tribunal and how much money was left to figure out. And I'm just wondering if you could kind of explain, you know, again, since this wasn't in the public, explain exactly how much money was sort of left to figure out and where those pots of money went and how that's a part of this bill. So if you could help me understand that, that'd be great. Thank you, Chair Marquardt.
Representative Marquardt.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and Representative O'Neill. And I know we've talked about your granddaughter in the past, and I just wish you the very best in your granddaughter. I've got, you know, two granddaughters and grandson, and just wish you the best on all that. So, yeah, I've already mentioned what was kind of what we did in the conference committee. And so, the global agreement came out Sunday night. And already, some negotiations occurred between Senator Chamberlain and myself at that point. On Monday night, Senator Chamberlain and I met with the governor and the speaker and the majority leader and talked out some more things. On Tuesday, there were offers made back and forth between the House and the Senate. It was Tuesday night that, kind of the main offer was accepted. And then on Wednesday, between the Senate and the House, Senator Chamberlain and myself, there's several other provisions that need to be cleaned up that were agreed to. And so, and then on, yesterday, Thursday, was the informational hearing. So when you look at the tax bill that we have, looking at the items that were not specifically heard, let's say in either bill, there was the MRF of $20 million, which was the global agreement. And then the Working Family Credit TANF. But, of course, we had a huge expansion of the Working Family Credit, and this was transferring dollars from that, so very much related. So you're probably looking at maybe $40, $50 million out of the $800 and some that probably weren't directly in either bills. So I don't know if that answers your question. But I will say this, that we are the only divided government in the nation, where you've got a Democratic one body and a Republican in another body. And the only other divided government I know is our federal government. And we know how that works. And the bottom line is that in a divided government, what has to happen is, first of all, the Democratic House in this case had to compromise with the Republican House. And then the divided legislature had to compromise and work with the governor and the executive branch. And that's exactly what happened here, which I think, because I think we're going to get some great results out of this compromise and out of this divided government. And I think that should be a model and example for the rest of this nation. And I wish the federal government would look at what we're doing here in Minnesota because with the divided government that we had, we brought the legislature and the executive branches together, and I firmly believe we're going to get some really good results. And so I don't know if there's any one way to do things. I don't think you can ever let the perfect get in the way of possibilities. And I think that happens when you're trying to make laws and legislation.
The member from Olmsted, Representative Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, this session, we've had a lot of talk about the budget, obviously. And the governor and many other people speak of the budget as a moral document. And seeing this sick tax in our tax bill is really frustrating. When I was first elected in 2015, I was sworn in, and one of the very first things that I started to try to address was this sick tax. You know, I'm a relatively healthy guy. Tomorrow, I'll be running the Med City Marathon. My 23rd Med City Marathon, I'm very excited about. I'd like to get home so I can get some rest before Sunday morning's marathon. Get done with this one and move on to the next, right? But I don't pay a whole lot of the provider tax. I don't get sick. I don't go to the doctor. And I just think it's absolutely immoral that our budget is set up to pay for Health and Human Services, higher education components of our budget. You name it. Virtually any component of our state government has reached into the Health Care Access Fund at this point and spent dollars from people that paid it in who... It wasn't my money because I'm not getting sick. No, it's that cancer patient. That cancer patient that's laid up for six months going through chemotherapy. It's paid for by the people who will break their leg. It's paid for by the person who needs chiropractic services from working on the farm or working their labor job. They pay that 2%, and I don't. And now, we raid the Health Care Access Fund throughout our entire state budget. Again, when I reflect on first getting elected, I just thought it was wrong. And I said, "We need to get rid of this." They said, "Nell, don't worry about it. It's going to sunset in 2019. It's just four years away. Be patient. We don't need to mess with it. It's going away forever. Forever. We are now putting it back into state budgeting. Forever. People like me won't pay a 1.8% tax unless, God forbid, I get sick. Then you want to kick me. Kick them when they're down." I'm shocked. I'm shocked that this is actually something that folks on either side of the aisle would be willing to do. It doesn't make sense. It's immoral. If this is our moral document, this budget's our moral document? What are we doing here? How do we expect people to make those payments? They're sick. They're the ones we should be taking care of. And we're charging it to them. And it's not just going to health care. And it's not just going to Health and Human Services. Our budget is doing the opposite. It's devouring the Health Care Access Fund. Representative Druzhkowski was making a long list, a very good point, going through all those situations that people would pay those in. Dental work, chiropractic services, any health care that you get in Minnesota. So there is one way a Minnesotan could avoid that 1.8% provider tax. They could go to John Hopkins. Then they don't pay it. If you live in La Crescent, you can go to La Crosse. If you're getting chiropractic services and you live in Grand Forks... Sorry. You'd be living in East Grand Forks. You could go to Grand Forks. All these things have negative consequences to our state. And they put our state at a disadvantage because the care that's received here costs more. It's wrong. It's the wrong thing to do. It puts our state at a negative, at a huge disadvantage, excuse me. And I just can't believe we're here tonight, even thinking about it. It needs to go away forever. And as long as I'm a state representative, I will be fighting hard to make it go away. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Hertas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would Representative Marquardt yield for a question, please?
He will yield. Representative Hertas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Marquardt, thank you for your collaboration for these past many seven years that I've been here with you on taxes. For three of the last years, I've had a child stillborn birth credit in the tax bills, which have made it to the finish line each year, and then, for some reason, goes out of existence. The childcare stillborn, or I'm sorry, the stillborn birth credit is particularly of concern for an individual like you in your district and Representative Lean. The border communities out your way don't have a hospital immediately nearby. And many of our Minnesota residents go across the border to have a baby. And if that baby is a stillborn, it wasn't happening in Minnesota, and they didn't get the credit. I've been trying to fix that. Could you please explain to me just what is going wrong? I know that the governor vetoed a bill, and we had some other things, but what went wrong? I know that the governor vetoed a bill and we had some other things, but what went wrong with, in conference committee, why this got tanked again?
Representative Markwart.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. And Representative Hurtaz, I support what you're trying to do. And the truth of the matter is, the surrogacy issue arises when that comes up, and we could not get all of the groups on board to feel comfortable with the language, and that's why it didn't go in. And it was over the, the surrogacy issue.
Representative Hurtaz.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and I would echo also, I think there's a lot of good things in this bill, but I can't support it either because of the provider tax. We've heard a number of reasons why this is a bad bill, and certainly, we've got plenty of circumstances that folks that should get ill, this tax would really take their breath away when they see what's happening. So thank you.
Any further discussion? The member from Sibley, Representative Grunhagen.
Oh, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, the compliments you've been given, Representative Markwart, I served with you when we were in the majority, we had Chair Davids, but I, you know, you've always had a cooperative and a open and fair approach on things, and I appreciate that also. So all the compliments from the floor, I'm sure are well-meaning and well-deserving. But when it comes to the sick tax members, I can't let it go by without mentioning the impact on providers. You know, I saw a dentist just the other day at the gas station from my local community when I was getting gas, and he, first thing he said is, "Don't renew that provider tax." I said, "I'm, I'm voting against it." And then I had a chiropractor right from Glencoe, and I saw him at a chamber meeting just briefly about a week and a half ago, and he said the same thing, "Don't renew that provider tax." He said he pays $8,000 to $9,000 in a year on that. And right before session started, I had to stop and see an oral surgeon here in St. Paul. He does oral surgery all across the state, and he takes Medicaid patients. He paid over 40-some thousand dollars on the provider tax last year. By the way, he had three children who were educated in Minnesota that became medical professions. He encouraged all of them to leave the state of Minnesota, and he told me he's leaving the state of Minnesota. Now, he said for a number of reasons, but one of the reasons was the provider tax. So when we talk about not only taxing the sick, we have to understand the impact that it's having on our medical providers. And it is very unpopular from, from my discussions I've had, and a discouragement to even come into the state to open a practice, I think, in some cases. So I think, you know, I have to agree with Representative Pearson over there. I'm going to continue to fight to get rid of the, that provider tax. And members, do we really need it? We got $3 billion of new revenue, 3 billion, and the latest revenue report shows we have almost 500 million of additional tax revenues over and above projections. We don't need to do this. Let's lower, we all ran on lowering the cost of healthcare, not raising it, and yet, here we are, your side of the aisle, raising the, the cost of healthcare. Members, I know it's a little late in the game, but think about the impact that it's having on the providers themselves, the negative impact of this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will take the roll. The clerk will close the roll. There being 74 ayes and 54 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate. Madam Speaker, I hereby announce the passage by the Senate, the following Senate file herewith transmitted, Senate File Number Eight, and the message assigned Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading, Senate File Number Eight, An Act Relating to Public Safety. Pursuant to Article Four, Section Nineteen of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that Senate File Number Eight be given its second, third readings and be placed upon its final adoption.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this is the motion to suspend the rules for the Public Safety Bill, and I would ask you to vote yes on the motion.
Representative Fabian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would encourage a green vote.
Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Encourage a green vote as well.
All those in favor of the Winkler motion, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. I keep losing the script. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number Eight.
Second reading. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Johnson moves to amend Senate File Number Eight, and the amendment is coded A-1.
Representative Johnson.
Madam Speaker, members, this amendment, we talked about before on the floor of the House when the Public Safety Bill originally, when we passed it. This deals with protecting and standing behind our prison guards and our prison staff. During the conference committees, I sat through all those committees, and unfortunately, this provision was never talked about, so I'd like to add that provision again, where it takes away any good time or credit to an inmate that is convicted of assaulting one of our staff. And Madam Speaker, I'd request a roll call.
Representative Johnson requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this amendment is outside the scope of the negotiated budget agreement, and I would ask for a no vote.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll. The clerk will close the roll. There being 52 ayes and 75 nays, the motion does not prevail, the amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Franson moves to amend Senate File Number Eight, the amendment is coded A-2.
Representative Franson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I would like to request a roll call, please.
Representative Franson requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Franson.
Thank you. Members, here's your chance to vote on protecting girls from female genital mutilation. Another chance for you to do the right thing and be on the right side of history. The A-2 amendment is my female genital mutilation bill that makes it a crime for parents to knowingly allow the mutilation to be done, guilty of a crime. I offered a similar amendment when the bill was on the House floor with a felony penalty. There was a fiscal note that said the cost would be zero, however, the majority party disagreed with that and said that there would be a cost to the bill, which is very odd, because if you think about it, if there's no cost, the fiscal note says no cost, one assumes it's not happening, and there will be no, no charge to the state, no cost to the state. But if there is a fiscal note, then one has to assume that it is happening in the state, and if it definitely is happening to the state, we, as lawmakers, need to do everything we can to protect girls. But since you're not believing your own MMB, it kind of illustrates the need for our own legislative budget office, but that's a discussion for another day. But since you don't believe your own fiscal note, I have made the penalty for this crime to be a gross misdemeanor, not a felony, so there is no cost to the state. So I thank you for your consideration of this amendment, and with that, the roll call.
Representative Winkler. She already, she already requested a roll call. There's a roll call on the amendment. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, please vote no.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll. The clerk will close the roll. Hurtaz votes aye, Speaker votes no. There being 52 ayes and 71 nays, the motion does not prevail, the amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Scott moves to amend Senate File Number Eight, the amendment is coded A-19-0588.
Representative Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The A-19 amendment redirects appropriations for the juvenile detention alternatives, initiatives that would add two FTEs and provide grants to counties, and instead would fund a second new judgeship that the courts need in the Seventh Judicial District. In the walkthrough of the bill that we heard this week, the informational meeting, the Chief Justice came and testified, and she was, she was clearly upset that they only received in the current judiciary bill, the appropriation for one judicial unit. And what, the Seventh Judicial District includes several counties here, I can read those off to you. They are Benton, Douglas, Millax, Morrison, Ottertail, Stearns, Todd, Clay, Becker, and Wadena. One of the things we heard about a lot this year in the judiciary, in the Judiciary Committee, was the fact that a lot of people are not receiving justice. And there's a terrible backlog of, of cases in the Seventh, and most of those, 42, there's been a 42% increase in children in need of protection services filings and permanency cases, there's been a 69% increase. Members, there are children waiting for justice. They may be in dangerous situations, and they're waiting. They're waiting for justice. And so what this bill would do is fund that additional judgeship, so that the people in those counties that I just read off can receive prompt justice. Please vote green.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker.
Representative Scott.
I'd like to re-request a roll call, please.
She'd like a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, please vote no.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll. The clerk will close the roll. There being 53 ayes and 74 nays, the motion does not prevail, the amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Lucero moves to amend Senate File Number Eight, the amendment is coded A-19-0589.
Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'd request a roll call.
Representative Lucero requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The FBI has established cybersecurity requirements to protect Minnesota's criminal justice data by implementing initiatives to effectively address cybersecurity threats and vulnerabilities. Because of this, the governor requested $1.8 million to address cybersecurity vulnerabilities to meet the FBI's security requirements. The House passed off the House floor to fully, fully, I'm sorry, to fund the request, fully fund it, but the conference committee came back with only approximately 850,000 of the 1.8 million that the governor had requested. The JDAI is a nonprofit that gives grants to counties that began as a pilot program for Hennepin and Ramsey County, and what this amendment seeks to do is to redirect a million dollars away from JDAI to the BCA for the FBI cybersecurity compliance. And the extra money would help bring Minnesota's criminal justice data into compliance with FBI requirements and not leave our state vulnerable to cybersecurity attacks. Members, we don't want cybersecurity attacks, do we? We do not, at least I hope we don't, and therefore, I would encourage a green vote on this amendment. Thank you.
Representative Winkler. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, please vote no on this amendment.
The clerk will take the roll. The clerk will close the roll. There being 54 ayes and 74 nays, the motion does not prevail, the amendment is not adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
O'Driscoll moves to amend Senate File Number Eight, the amendment is coded A-19-0590.
The member from Stearns, Representative O'Driscoll, to your amendment.
Madam Speaker, I would ask that this amendment be temporarily laid over.
Representative O'Driscoll, I read the name wrong. The member from Wright, Representative O'Neal, to your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Representative O'Neal.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We're all getting a little tired. It's getting close to 2:00 AM, so, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This amendment redirects the $314,000 appropriation for the Department of Human Rights Civic Engagement Coordinator. Coordinator to the Public Defense Board for New Public Defenders and Staff Assistance. So the Civil Engagement Coordinator was a one-time appropriation. It was a grant, and it is now expiring. The Department of Human Rights now wants to fund it permanently through the General Fund. When the House bill left here, it had $12 million for public defenders to help with their increasing caseload. When it came back, it had half of that, just $6 million. Well, this is not $6 million. It would help to fund additional public defenders and additional staff. And we know public defenders provide legal services for those that are in low income, and otherwise their civic rights might be violated. With this additional amount, it won't fully fund them, but it will help provide quite a few more attorneys. And with that, I'd ask for a roll call.
Representative O'Neill requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, please vote no.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 54 ayes and 74 nays, the motion does not prevail. The amendment is not adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number 8.
Third reading, discussion to the bill. Representative Mariani.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This Judiciary and Public Safety Conference report is a good bill. It's a responsible bill. It meets our constitutional obligation to fund our judiciary and provide for strong public safety and corrections agencies. Net spending in this bill is a little over 200, or 2.4 billion, which is 123 million over the base. The House came down from its House bill a good 100 million. The Senate bill was a severely flawed bill that did a disservice to our judiciary branch. And so that bill needed to come up a good 108 million just to meet us halfway in terms of what the House had responsibly proposed. The bill itself is a result of a conference committee process and subsequent conversations that really reflect the best of this body. The Minnesota House does its work distinctly, apparently, from the other body. We have public hearings. We engage the public. We have transparent sharing. We have strong collaboration across House members in a bipartisan manner. That frankly contrasts the efforts of the other body, which only chose to meet once, only once, members, when they had to gavel during the course of the next couple of weeks. And so that gives you an indication of the difficulty that we had in trying to have a conversation with the other body that ultimately led to the involvement of both Republican and Democratic leadership in the executive branch in constructing this bill. Members, I want to thank our conferees on this committee. Representative Lush, Chairman Lush, Representative Mueller, Representative Pinto, Representative Zerwos, and Representative Chair Considine, who also participated and helped us out with the deliberations. I want to thank our staff, like all our staff here, amazing people who seem tireless. They certainly work very hard, they're very knowledgeable. Ben Johnson, Jeff Devel, John Walsh, Rachel Gennady, Jamelle Lundey, Jason Chavez Cruz, and Letitia Townsend. And before I tell you what's in this bill, however, I want to share with you what's not in this bill. Because even though this is a good bill, and we should vote for this bill, it's important that we know what the Minnesota House, who really led this year in the whole area of public safety and corrections and judiciary work and reform, the things that were left off the table as a result of the other body's utter refusal to even have a conversation about these issues, not just in conference committee, but frankly throughout the course of this legislative session. And as I share these with you, I want to ask for your, frankly, I want to ask for your forgiveness for giving me the privilege and the honor of chairing this conference committee with the expectation that we would bring back at least half, a quarter, a third, a portion of good House provisions. We were able to bring back some good House provisions, but clearly, the vision of this body is not fully captured in the bill before you. First of all, let me just say, we don't have gun safety provisions in this bill. Representative Pinto, thank you for proposing that our state's gun background check law, frankly, should apply to everyone. I'm sorry that the other body, which held no hearings whatsoever on this issue, agrees with you. Representative Richardson, I want to thank you for proposing that Minnesota have an extreme risk protection order to help make sure that people who pose a threat to the public, due perhaps to mental health stresses, can be prevented from using firearms to hurt others and to hurt the public. The other body chose not to adopt and not to hear this red flag law. On a vote of 1 to 4 in conference committee, the other body voted down both of these proposals, and I'm sorry for that. Representative Long, thank you for your work this year on probation reform. You had a bipartisan bill along with Representatives Zerwos, Jay Shong, Hamilton, West, Gomez, Polston, Lee, and others. Each of you believe that Minnesota's probation system that currently has over 105,000 individuals in it should be reformed. The other body did not agree with that, even though the Minnesota County Attorneys Association crafted good, strong, smart, compromised language to make that happen. Representative Dorr, thank you for your work in offering a reform of our bail system. The truth is, folks, that there are people in this state who linger in jail simply because they can't pay a small bail, while other folks with means for the exact same charges post bail immediately and walk. It's just unfair. It feeds inequities in our state, and the other body wouldn't even spend another second on it. Representative Hertos and Long, both of you worked in a bipartisan manner for collateral consequences of conviction, that the courts consider collateral consequences and entertain petitions for relief. The Senate wouldn't hear that provision. The Senate wouldn't agree to that provision. Chairman Lush, thank you for your belief that traffic fines should not be the way to fund our court systems, for knowing that funding for the courts is everyone's responsibility and should not disproportionately hurt low-income people. Thank you for knowing that traffic fines should not lead to an endless spiral of suspensions, more fines, criminal charges, loss of jobs, simply because an individual just doesn't have the economic means to pay a traffic fine. The other body passed on this issue, even though last year they passed similar provisions, and even though they had members in the majority there who were signatures to your bill. Chair Lush. Representative O'Neill, thank you for so many things, quite frankly, this year, especially in criminal sexual conduct laws, but also for your well-funded belief that it is better to provide drug treatment to those struggling with addiction as a smarter, effective, fairer way than imprisoning them. It was not supported by the other body, and I sincerely apologize to you for not being able to convince them otherwise. This is good reform that you've been promoting for a number of years in this body. Representative Stevenson, similarly, I apologize to you for not having your bill here that smartly combines mental health services with probation. Even though the other body's conference committee chair publicly expressed a desire to address mental health this year, the Senate chose not to. Members, the House carried timely law changes to our state's sexual harassment ban. The other body would not accept that. The House carried a wise approach to cannabis reform that House Republicans and Democrats supported, that law enforcement and legalization advocates both supported, that the Minnesota County Attorneys Association supported. The other body does not want to have these groups be sanctioned to simply have a discussion, an exploration, to be able to have the state possibly adjust to the massive change that is happening across the nation and is happening across our northern border with our state, with Canada. The other body also failed to consider the House's data collection proposal to help determine if our appropriations for police training was an effective one. The other body failed to give citizens who were once new immigrants their day in court to protect themselves from deportation from an overly harsh federal administration seeking to deport them as a result of wrongful convictions from their past, from many years ago. Many elderly Southeast Asians and others are at risk as a result. The state of Minnesota members should always seek to protect its citizens, but the other body refused to do so. We failed to bring back proposals to reform criminal forfeiture, criminal forfeiture rules and procedures, and to regulate the use of air drones in police activities. The House proposal to lower marijuana thresholds was rejected by the other body. These proposals deal with the lives of real people, with Minnesotans. And so I apologize to the members of this House for not bringing these just, fair House policy proposals back from our conference committee, proposals that change how government works, that places community at the center of public safety and makes Minnesota safer. But could've, should've been, should not stop us from voting for this bill right here, right now. It strongly feeds the judiciary. The other body's bills severely underfunded our courts coming off of their floor. It strongly funds our public defender board. The other body severely underfunded that as well, as it came off their floor. It strongly funds our guardian ad litem. It does provide one new district court judge to the 7th Judiciary District in greater Minnesota to handle the exploding issues that are arising from the opioid epidemic. The other body had provided zero, zero support, no additional judges for the 7th Judicial District. As a result of our work, we produced one of the two requested. I suspect they need those two. It provides for our state prisons to add badly-needed correction officers to meet the dangerous understaffing of those correctional facilities. Thank you, Chair Considine, for being the stalwart leader on that issue. It resuscitates the ombuds person for corrections, an office that Minnesota was among the first in the nation to create and that we lost 15 years ago during the height of severe budget It funds the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, JDAI, that does more, members, than just give grants to counties. This organization, which is part of a national movement, works smartly, intelligently with counties for systems reform, not just for progress, but to totally adjust and change how counties interact with young people who are getting themselves in trouble, to find productive, positive outcomes in activities and direction for them other than just locking them up. It provides funding for new scientists and analysts at the Bureau for Criminal Apprehension to help with the timely investigation for prosecution of drug-related crimes. It strongly funds the School Safety Center, a House priority. Thank you, Representative Christensen, for leading that charge. It creates a mandate and funds 911 CPR to ensure that all 911 dispatchers are trained to get CPR instructions in real time to citizens. Thank you, Representative Sandstein. It's not a stretch to argue that this could be an immediate lifesaver for Minnesotans across our state. It creates and funds the Task Force on Murdered and Missing Indigenous Women. Thank you, Representative Kunish Pudin. It creates and funds the Working Group on Criminal Sexual Conduct. Thank you, Representative Mueller. It funds a Veterans Domestic Abuse Prevention Grant proposed by Representative Brian Johnson, but it fails to fund the broader proposal from Representative O'Neill that was preferred by the MCBW, the Minnesota Coalition of Battered Women, that would have made those opportunities available across the state, including veterans, but other groups as well. It requires all law enforcement departments to adopt policies on criminal sexual assault investigations. Thank you, Representative Mueller. Those requirements are expected to be of high quality. The Senate had proposed that each department can basically create its own standard. They had to create one. They had to create a policy, but their own standard. Our bill, the House position, said no, it needed to at least meet the high standard developed by our law enforcement experts at the Post Board. It funds security grants used to harden, to make safer, our places of worship. Thank you, Representative Edelson, for that. Members, you know that there's been a rash of attack on places of worship, of faith centers, of all faiths across this nation. Our centers of worship, our faith communities deserve the protection that this grant program offers them. It funds for offender healthcare. It establishes conditions for segregated housing of inmates, collection of data in solitary confinement, requires mental health services for those confined. Thank you, Representative Zerwos. You've been a champion of this for a number of years, and we finally are going to get this across the line. This is the right and just thing to do. This is where mental health and our criminal justice and correction systems intersect. We simply have to do better and more humanely. It updates and amends provisions on a number of sex offender positions of authority issues. Representative Wazilak, Representative O'Neill, Representative Mueller, thank you for your work. Representative Damaf, you also had a provision like this. We couldn't get that provision across the line. We should have been able to do that. It made changes to a number of provisions prompted by Representative Grasso related to child pornography, increasing statutory maximum sentences, and increasing conditional release terms. It requires predatory offenders notice to license home care providers. Thank you again, Representative Edelson. Thank you again Representative Edelson. Members, all of these provisions are one step away from becoming law because you, because this body, the House, brought them into that conference committee, brought them onto that table. And even though we lost a number of big reform issues, we can proudly say in this body that we were the voice, we were the champions for public safety, for justice in the state of Minnesota. We were the ones that pushed the other body into agreeing to them. Frankly, the Senate should be thanking the House, should be thanking us for creating the conditions that allows this bill to meet its constitutional obligation to properly fund our judiciary and to make stronger our corrections and our public safety systems. This bill would not have happened without you, without us, members, and for that, I am very proud to have played a role in helping to facilitate. Madam Speaker, members, I stand for questions. I look forward to hearing your, well, we already heard the amendments, and I most look forward to your affirmative vote for House File 3.
The member from right, Representative O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. And I'm not going to ask the Chair to yield, and I don't need to because I actually serve on all three of the committees. So I serve on the Corrections Committee, on the Public Safety Committee, and on the Judiciary Committee, and I'm the lead on Corrections. So I was either watching you on television, on my computer, or I was actually in the room the entire time that you were in the conference committee and working. And I had the great privilege and honor of actually presenting four bills before the conference committee. I think that's probably a record for me. That was a lot. Even pitch hitting for Representative Herr in her time of need, and that was great. So I don't need to ask you, but I was listening very carefully to what you were reminding all of us about, and I share your disappointment, and as you said, very few of my provisions made it into the final bill, which was incredibly disappointing. Also, ignition interlock didn't make it in, so mandatory after second DWI. There are a lot of provisions that didn't make it in. But I think probably what was the most disappointing to me is the fact that nothing was decided other than the two provisions that were voted on in the actual conference committee. No Sames and Sibblers, absolutely nothing was decided in the conference committee. And what's most disappointing to me is that the entire bill was decided by the leadership tribunal. So that was incredibly disappointing. And what's disappointing about that as a policy person is that those that were in the room, the three leaders, don't serve on committees, they didn't read the bills, they don't know the bills like we do. I'm not sure exactly how they made their decisions because it was behind closed doors. I wasn't invited, the public wasn't invited, the press wasn't invited. So yeah, I am incredibly disappointed at the work product that came back out because I have no idea how they even arrived at those decisions. So I'm going to be voting no, unfortunately, even though I serve on those three committees. I could tell you every piece of policy in here. But I'm disappointed because of the process. I'm disappointed that this entire bill was decided by people that don't serve on the committees, that don't know the policy, that don't have the passion that we do in those three committees, and for that reason, I'll be voting no.
The member from Isanti, Representative Johnson.
Madam Chair, members, when this bill left the House, I called it the Unsafe Communities Bill. It's a lot better now. How is it better? Well, it does not have House File 8 or 9 in it, which has been proven that those bills don't actually do anything. They don't help. They don't stop the problem. But what it also does not have, it does not send private information of non enforcement officers to a private company or a private outside organization. And it doesn't have increased court fees to fund other programs. What it does do, it increases the public safety budget by $64 million, 4% increase, which is good. It increases the courts, the judiciary, by over $81 million or over 8% increase. That is good. But it's unfortunate, we had some good provisions that were also left out. A number of good provisions by Representative O'Neill, including the interlock. It's very disappointing that that's not in this bill. It's also disappointing that a provision that we voted on, on this floor before that bill went out, was not even talked about in conference committee. And that provision was standing behind our corrections officers. That was disappointing. This bill is a much better public safety bill than when it left, but I still don't know if I'm going to vote for it or not. I have not decided. I'll leave that up to each member whether they want to vote for this or not. But as I said, it is a much better bill than it would have left the floor the first time.
The member from Sherburne, Representative Sirwos.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Members, I want to start by thanking Chair Mariani and the majority for allowing me to serve on your conference committee. I had just a wonderful, wonderful time working with you and your team as this process went forward. Members, I'm going to talk about one provision that's in the bill and then a little bit about the process in which we got here. I need to begin by thanking Commissioner Chanel and the Department of Corrections for their unwavering support for my prisoner segregation reform bill. Members, three years ago, the Star Tribune ran a multi-part series detailing the conditions within segregation or isolation units in the Department of Corrections with inmates being held for three, four, five, six, or seven hundred days consecutively. In dozens and dozens of instances each year, after serving hundreds of days in segregation, inmates were simply let directly out of prison. And then we were stunned when they came back. Members, the series in the Star Tribune details quite horrific stories of people after hundreds of days of solitary confinement, suffering significant psychological trauma and issues in which they felt they had no recourse, and their families felt as though there was no one who was monitoring where they were and how long they had been kept in solitary I worked for years with the former Commissioner of Corrections, putting data request after data request in, trying to get the data on the numbers of inmates held in segregation for what offenses and for how long. The department was never able to provide me with that data. The bill contained, within the omnibus bill for solitary confinement reform, is really a work product of collaboration with NAMI, with stakeholders, with other stakeholders, and the Department of Corrections. The first time I met with Commissioner Chanel this winter, I told him what I'd been working on for the last few years, and in our first meeting, he committed to working with me to get this done. And he worked with me step by step the entire way through the process. This bill will not only for the first time be the first piece of legislation ever to place in statute the statutory authority for the state of Minnesota to utilize solitary confinement, the most restrictive punishment we do in the state of Minnesota. It's the first time this has ever placed in statute. It sets up a process to review the uses of solitary confinement to make sure that 100, after 120 days, that is elevated to the Commissioner of Corrections. It's reviewed, and there is a behavior management plan, and if need be, a mental health treatment plan established. There is graduated intervention to make sure that if people can go through a step-down process and be released, they are released from solitary confinement back to the general population. Members, the United Nations says 15 days in solitary confinement constitutes torture. That's the international standard. We routinely have Minnesotans in solitary confinement for hundreds and hundreds or 1,000 days. For the first time ever in statute, following the passage of this bill, we will mandate mental health screenings for those inmates held in solitary confinement, and we will mandate that mental health care is provided for those individuals. And most importantly, members, following the passage of this bill, we will require actual data to be collected on who is in solitary confinement, for what infractions, and for what length of time, and report that back to the legislature since we are charged with overseeing the Department of Corrections. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Chanel, I thank you for your partnership and your work on helping me get this done. I could not have done it without your help. Briefly on the process, members, with this conference committee, it really is the tale of two processes. The House Democrat majority was unbelievably accommodating and kind in how we went through this conference committee process. Chair Mariani extended to me and to our partisan staff the ability to caucus with the DFL prior to every single conference committee. We had a House conferee team when we went into those conference committee meetings, and I truly, truly value that, and I appreciate that. As others have said, we took two votes in the conference committee in which the conference committee voted down House File 8 and House File 9. Those were the only votes that we took in public. After that, this bill was handed over to the trilateral power brokers that decided our fate. We got updates once in a while, and I appreciate that even through this process, the majority allowed us to sit in as the three high scepters reported down what they had ruled on each issue. I had never been in a real-life Game of Thrones scene before, and so it was interesting each time they came down to impart their wisdom, provision by provision, what would be included and what wouldn't. It was truly an interesting experience. There are multiple examples of provisions that were agreed to by both the House and Senate, only to be spiked by the governor prior to any action by the legislature. I truly believe that handing that type of power over to the executive preemptively really weakens our standing. I have huge concerns with how this process played out. Members, thank you so much for containing this bill within my solitary confinement bill within your larger bill, but the process makes this bill a real challenge to support here today on the floor.
The representative from Candy, Ohio, Representative Miller.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Sirwos, you gave a fantastic speech the other day when we were doing the walkthrough, and then I had to speak after you, after that mic drop moment, and now tonight I'm speaking after you, after you gave some incredible points. And I've been listening through everyone talking here about the disappointment of the process, and I'm certainly disappointed by that as well. However, I do have a slightly different take. I do think that the three-person thing that we talked about aside, someone earlier talked about divided government and how that sometimes brings out different things. I think in this bill, in the end, there was a lot of good that came out through a divided government. I want to thank Representative Mariani. You really gained my respect this session. You and I don't always agree on a lot of the issues, but we had incredible communications throughout the session. You're honest, you're forthright, and my respect for you has grown. I don't want you to apologize for this bill. You had one of the most, some of the most volatile issues that you brought to your committee this year. You know, the obvious ones were the gun bills. And we went into the evening, and both sides were fired up and ready to go, and the way that you handled that is the way that I think government as a whole can learn from the way that happened. It was done with respect, it was done orderly, you were very prepared for it, and in the end, it was amazing because we talked about this afterwards, and the two opposing sides on one of the most volatile issues in the state of Minnesota were talking with each other. That's a pretty incredible thing, and I think we need more of that. Some of the things that didn't make it in, but to show how the system works, I supported your cannabis work group. Remember, I actually brought it over to the Senate and tried to get them to support it as well. You and I are definitely on opposite ends of that issue. We tried to do it, it didn't make it through. Representative Dean, I've often joked that it's surprising when you and I can agree on something, but on the life sentence issue with juveniles, we agreed on that and I supported that. Now, unfortunately, that didn't make it through, but I think that we had really good conversations on that, and I hope to see that coming back in the future because I think that's something that we should do. I think we did end with a pretty decent bill. The JDAI organization, I got to know more this year and members, that's a fantastic organization that I think we need to support, and some of the criminal activities that start off in youth and move up through adulthood, especially in our minority groups and other places where we talk about things that need to change, I think that group does an incredible job. As a matter of fact, in talking with them, I've invited them to Greater Minnesota because I think they need to do their work out there. I'm encouraged that Representative Grosso, his entire bill of stay of adjudication that he's been working on for the last, since he's been here, so now three years, we got a little bit going, okay? We didn't get everything that we wanted, but I can tell you the stay of adjudication is something that's very frustrating. We did get in there. And finally, the one that I want to really point of emphasis on is Representative Mueller came forward with a bill for came forward with a bill for a working group. I have a lot of working groups here. A lot of us are skeptical of these working groups, but I think they can serve a very good purpose, and I supported Representative Muller in that. The final day, I believe, of our committee, we had a very impassioned conversation. And members, we're going to be working on a criminal sexual conduct statutory reform working group. What that's fancy for is, I can tell you, members, that from the pathetic sentence that my wife's stepfather had for molesting her for 13 years, to where this year, I currently have three cases of child molestation in my district, currently ongoing right now, and I can tell you in those three cases, the offender is getting treated more like the victim than the victims are. There's work that we have to do in the state of Minnesota. And with your leadership, Representative Muller, on this, and I hope to work in future with this, members, we're going to be able to do some good things with that. There are good things in this bill. I'm glad that there are things in this bill that aren't terrible for me that I can't vote for this. Representative Mariani, I enjoyed working with you, I hope to work with you more in the future. Hope we can do more work on policy. I think one of the things that I like about public safety, and I'm assuming judiciary is not in there, we do a lot of policy work, and members, that's our toughest work here in the legislature. It's easy to spend other people's money, it's difficult to make good policy for the people of Minnesota, and I think we made some good policies here. I am going to be supporting this bill, and I do ask that other people support it as well. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Representative Considine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just really wanted to get up quickly and thank the members of the subcommittee, Representative Poston, Representative Zerwos, Representative O'Neill. I'm sorry that you don't feel that you can vote for it because you were actually the architect of several of the more significant pieces of it, and were a great deal of help on the ombudsman. I would also like to thank Chairman Mariani, Representative Christensen, Representative Tafke, Representative Wogomont, all of whom showed real leadership and tenacity in the group. And I'd like to thank our CA, Jamiel Lundie, our CLA, Adam Koppel, Big John. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank as to your last name, but thank you for all the work you did on the other side. And then the three amigos, Mr. Dibble, Ben Johnson, and Mr. Walls. Your efforts are amazing. You were like walking like zombies the other night. You've been up, what, 24 hours in a row? That was amazing. Oh, and Roberts, sorry, Hader, our staff persons. Just want to say thank you to all those people and look forward to a green vote.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Mariani.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and thank you Chair Considine. I did forget several good folks, including Mr. Hader, Mr. Holquist, and I don't recall Kelly's last name right now, I apologize, but members, I was humbled to chair this committee and to chair this conference committee, and the result, because we worked strongly together, is a good bill that deserves your vote. It will keep Minnesota safe, it will advance public safety in the state of Minnesota, fairness in the state of Minnesota. There's more that we need to do, and we will be back to do that, but this bill truly deserves the support of everyone in this body here today. I hope that you can vote for it. Thank you.
The clerk will close the roll. With 87 ayes and 39 nays, the bill passes and its title agreed to. The next bill is House File Number 2. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 2, an act relating to state government appropriating money for jobs and economic development. Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moved that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 2 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I call upon the member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler, to your motion.
Madam Speaker, members, this is the motion to suspend the rules to take up the jobs bill tonight, and I would ask for a yes vote.
Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I would also encourage a yes vote.
Representative Draskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Encourage a yes vote as well.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 2.
Second reading. There are amendments at the desk. If there is no objection, we'll let the author explain the bill before we act on amendments. Representative Moni, to your bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly hope this bill takes less time than when it first came to the floor, which was 14 hours and some odd minutes. It's good Bill's vote for it. No, 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 no. I need to thank a number of people and then tell you about the bill. Won't take me too long. I want to thank my colleagues on the conference committee, Representative Wogenius, Representative Long, Representative Hassan Stevenson, great partners in this particular bill. I need to thank the staff. We all know how much the staff makes us look better here, and these folks make me look good this year. Dave Sullivan, our researcher, Travis Reed, my CA, Mike Muller, my CA and CLA, the nonpartisan staff, Anna Shaleen, Ben Weeks, and Sowe Becca. And surprisingly, in negotiations for this bill, I should probably thank the commissioners too. Grove with Deed, Lepick with Department of Labor and Industry, and Kelly with Comrus. This bill does a lot of great, good, does many good things. It does one really great thing. It puts the toughest wage theft law in the nation into effect in this state. And are many, and there are many protections for employees and employers in this particular bill. I'm going to take a minute to talk what this wage theft bill does. And Madam Speaker, if you could quiet the chamber? Members, there is many, many people in this state have had money stolen from them by their employer every year for years. Well now, if that employer steals enough money, we made wage theft a crime in the criminal code. They can now be charged with a felony if they get over $1,000 from one employee. It requires employers to provide written notice to employees of the terms of their employment. Never done before in this state. Clearly establishes that the failure to pay full amounts of wages earned is a violation of the law. Strengthens the Department of Labor and Industry's enforcement authority. Clearly establishes that the Attorney General can enforce civil and criminal wage theft violations. Puts civil penalties for retaliating against an employee that tries to get paid. The penalties range from $700 to $3,000. The employer needs to keep records. And there was an issue, it was a $10,000 fine when it left this floor, it is now $5,000. The Department of Labor can share information with state licensing agencies, state contracting agencies, and other employees of the employer. I will say the Senate did relent on a couple of requirements, that the employee make written demand for payment, and that the Department of Labor and Industry could not investigate for five days. I just never understood those. Employers are, and finally, employers are ineligible for state contracts if they violate this law. They are ineligible under the responsible contractor law, and criminal wage theft or violating civil laws in favor to pay wages. Again, I have been here for 20 years, and we all, hopefully, anyone who's been here 20 years gets to do a bill or two that they always will remember. This is one. I have already today gotten calls from four other states on how we did this, and I will be sharing that with them a lot. I want to give great credit to the governor who has backed me on this particular bill and the Speaker of the House the whole time. This is a big deal. This bill also puts provisions in the bill for small and mid-sized contractors that they can't be held, they get all, they get paid also. The big general contractors can't hold back 5% of their weight, their contract for six months, two years, or for a very long time. It's something called retainage, to make sure that someone comes back and finishes things up. They can, they can hold money for a while, but they can't hold it for that long. They have 60 days to pay when they're done. We will be able to get an inventory of all the programs, and all the programs that take money from those programs, from the Department of Employment and Economic Development, something we've never had before. We put $3 million into dairy to help dairy farmers in this state. We put a million and a half into childcare. In Comrus, we finally, they finally got their operating increase so they can give those raises to the people that deserve them. We helped banks and credit unions in this bill. We help people who have missing or unclaimed properties in this state. There are also things I'm very disappointed in in this bill. But what could I expect when I had my target cut from $90 million down to $10 million, which led to very severe cuts for programs? Programs that help people get a job and help people create jobs. With that $10 million, plus $23 million out of the Workforce Development Fund, we did the best we could. And I hope that many of these small nonprofits can survive these cuts. Some of them were cut to zero. The good thing I will say is that some of them have balances in their accounts. There is still some money from the base to many of, many of these organizations, and there are some discretionary grant programs that Deed will help as best as it can. I'm not going to go through the whole bill any more than that. I am going to ask that Representative Wogenius would speak to the energy parts of the bill. I know we're under the pressure to get out of here as soon as we can, so with that, I am finished with my explanation, and we'll take questions after Representative Wogenius.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Wogenius.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Members, the energy bill and jobs bill were together for the conference committee. The energy bill that passed the House would have committed Minnesota to a clean energy future and accelerated the rapidly expanding number of high-paying, clean-energy jobs. The Senate said no, leading to the very, very modest compromise bill that we have today. We agreed on three provisions. Representative Long's provision extending the pay slot, Representative Kaplan's storage provisions, and Representative Richardson's effort to encourage diversity in the energy workplace. These are good provisions, but they don't even begin to deal with the climate crisis. Nonetheless, together with the good part of the wage theft, you certainly should vote
There is an amendment at the desk. Representative Garofalo offers the following amendment, and the clerk will report the amendment.
Garofalo moves to amend House File Number 2 as follows. The amendment is coded A1.
To the author of the amendment, Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker, I'd request a roll call.
Seeing 15 hands, roll call being requested, there will be a roll call.
Madam Speaker and members, this is a budget proposal that was in the Walls, Governor Walls's budget. This is the Prairie Island Net Zero Project. Candidly, this is a generational type of change project, makes the Prairie Island Indian community the goal of being zero emissions, fully funded from the Renewable Development Fund. Again, this is a site that has nuclear reactors, onsite nuclear reactors, that this tribal community did not want. This is the first time they would have any appropriation in it. There is simply no reason to oppose this project on the merits, and I would ask for a green vote.
The member from Goodhue, Representative Haley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. And to Representative Wogenius's point on clean energy future, this is an opportunity to do that, and for the state of Minnesota and the Prairie Island Indian community to set a standard. This is a well-vetted project, and I ask for your support of the Garofalo amendment.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this amendment is outside the scope of the budget agreement, and I would ask for a no vote.
Representative Davis.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, we didn't have any agreement. I think there's usually, in a special session, there's five signatures, but we have three signatures from the tribunal, which none of us agreed to. We did not agree to the conditions that were set forth by the governor that he can't really even set forth.
Further discussion. Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the amendment. The clerk will close the roll. With 51 ayes and 76 nays, the motion does not prevail and the amendment is not adopted. There is another amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Zerwos moves to amend House File Number 2 as follows. The amendment is coded A2.
To the author of the amendment, Representative Zerwos.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd request a roll call.
Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, member, the members, the hate-to amendment deals with critical infrastructure and pipelines, increasing criminal and civil penalties for trespassing on areas of critical infrastructure or causing damage to critical infrastructure. I'd ask for a green vote.
Representative Winkler.
Members, please vote no.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the amendment. The clerk will close the roll. With 54 With 54 ayes and 74 nays, the motion does not prevail, and the amendment is not adopted. There is an amendment at the desk, the clerk will report the amendment.
Swazinski moves to amend House File Number Two, the amendment is coded A-3.
To the author of the amendment, Representative Swazinski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members. This amendment is awfully straightforward. So one of the big blanks that you saw in any spreadsheet you saw go around this floor, or in committee, or in your caucus rooms, was the RDA. And that account has over $60 million in it. $60 million of your constituents' hard-earned dollars. Tonight, folks, you have the ability to vote green on this amendment, which I ask for a roll call.
Roll call being requested, seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call.
You can either side with the trident that seeks to pierce your constituents' pocketbook, or you can side with this amendment, which simply is a lights-on, lights-off. So when the account has money in it, they simply do not assess the fee to your constituents. I don't happen to have, I have Excel ratepayers in my district, but I am not currently one, and I hope not to be one. Potentially, I'm going to stay in my rural cooperatives, I appreciate them and their autonomy. But, folks, what this will give you is an opportunity to stand with your constituents, stand with lower electric bills, or stand with the trident. Vote green.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, please vote no.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the amendment. The clerk will close the roll. O'Driscoll votes no. With 52 ayes and 75 nays, the motion does not prevail, and the amendment is not adopted. There is another amendment at the desk, the clerk will report the amendment.
Fabian moves to amend House File Number Two, the amendment is coded A-4.
To the author of the amendment, Representative Fabian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'd request a roll call.
Roll call being requested, seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call.
Madam Speaker, members, the A-2 is a very simple amendment. It simply says that the legislature finds and affirms that petroleum pipelines and refineries located in Minnesota play a key role in the operation of the regional and national petroleum industry, and also function as an important part of Minnesota's economy. I'd ask for an affirmative green vote. Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, seeing discussion, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I would ask for a no vote.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the amendment. The clerk will close the roll. With 55 ayes and 73 nays, the motion does not prevail, and the amendment is not adopted. Third reading of House File Number Two.
Third reading, House File Number Two.
Discussion. Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I just want to briefly thank the Conferes for the removal of three terrible provisions. The first was the billion-dollar boondoggle known as paid family leave, that would have been run by the state. Very, very thankful to the Conferes that was removed. The second, net neutrality, would have done nothing more than cripple internet innovation. Very happy, Madam Speaker, that that is gone. And the third, very happy that the terrible, no-good, very bad policy that would have crippled Minnesota's energy future, all based on the lie of human-caused climate change. Thank you for removing these bad policies.
Representative Gunther.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill has been greatly improved, in my opinion. It was a terrible bill for small businesses to start out with last time, and I regretfully had to vote against the bill, but this bill has greatly improved. It does have jobs, creates jobs, preserves jobs, and there was a lot of help and hope for small business nonprofit programs, and many of them are still in, some of them are out. But we do have accountability for those programs through DEED, and I think this bill could prove to be a very strong bill in the future. And there are 2,100 and some jobs created by Riverbend Business Facilitators in Mankato that makes this job, a jobs bill, a great jobs bill. It creates preserving jobs in Duluth and the paper mill. I'm sure glad it didn't go to Michigan. So I think this is a bill that I can vote for this time. It's got some things in there that I didn't like at all, and I've talked to the chairman, and we understand that. He liked them, I didn't. He's not perfect. But anyway, this is a bill that is greatly improved, and I will vote for it.
The member from Roseau, Representative Fabian. And he passes. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? The author of the bill, Representative Mahoney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll close with, this is the best jobs bill we could put together this year with the circumstances we were handed. I do want to say a couple of things. The Energy Bill might have been the Energy Bill, and the chairs of the Energy Committee did not get along, did not find common ground. But that is not reason to attack another chair. And if the Senate doesn't have the class to shut someone down when they are attacking a member of this chamber, shame on the Senate. Representative Wogenius did the best job she was asked to do, just as this chair in the Senate was. We cannot get personal on this floor. There are members on the other side of the aisle that I like, there are members on the other side of the aisle that I like a lot less. But I don't attack you or your personalities or your character. And having watched the Senate argument on jobs, I hear we were the obstinate ones. I hear we were the ones that cut all the programs. I'll just say this, we must have been in two entirely different conference committees, There was mutual destruction in that conference committee to the nonprofits of this state, and we both shared the blame. But it is the best bill we could do under the circumstances, so with that, I'll ask for a green vote.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 89 ayes and 39 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. The next bill under consideration is House File 10, the clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 10, a bill for an act relating to retirement. Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that House File Number 10 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I call upon the member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker and members, this is the motion to suspend the rules to take up the pension bill, and I would ask for a yes vote.
Discussion to the motion. Representative Driskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I encourage a yes vote as well.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 10.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk, the clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 10.
Third reading. I call upon the author of the bill, Representative Murphy, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representatives, House File 10 is the policy bill that was passed out of the Pension Commission unanimously. It covers basic yearly administrative changes, and it has 11 articles, and Article 1 is about MSRS, Minnesota State Retirement Association, administrative changes. Article 2 is PERA.
Excuse me, Representative Murphy, I'm going to ask the chamber to please take any conversations into the alcoves or into the retiring room, so that we can hear Representative Murphy explain the bill. Thank you, Representative Murphy.
Thank you. Article 3 is the PERA, statewide volunteer firefighter plan. Article 4 is Volunteer Firefighter Relief Association. All the items in there is by consensus of the work group that meets with the state auditor. Article 5 has to do with the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities' retirement provisions, and it increases, the one thing in there, it increases the employees' contribution to match the TRA employee contribution rates, and keeps their choice of whether they will, when they do retire, whether they will be part of TRA or the IRA program. Article 6 generally, APAC is the 4, retirement plan changes, and how it deals with its computer programming, and whether there's some things that have to be done in cooperation with Minnet. Article 7 is a bill for a single constituent that Representative Uacam brought to us with Senator Latz. Article 8 talks about the MRF supplemental contributions. Article 9 has to do with state aid to local governments. Article 10 is State Board of Investments salary administration, and Article 11 is technical changes. I ask for your cooperation and your vote.
Discussion to the bill. Discussion to the bill. Seeing no discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. The clerk will close the roll. There being 128 ayes and 0 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, DFL members, we will caucus downstairs immediately upon recess, and we will be in recess for approximately 30 minutes.
Representative Winkler moves a recess to the call of the chair approximately 30 minutes. Any discussion to the motion? Representative Driskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. New House Republicans will caucus in Room 111B downstairs.
Any further discussion to the motion? Representative New.
Madam Speaker, the GOP caucus will also caucus during recess.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails, and the House stands adjourned to the call of the chair approximately 30 minutes. Did I, I'm sorry, the House stands in recess to the call of the chair. At least some people are awake, so I did not gavel. We will recess to the call of the chair approximately 30 minutes.